Good evening. Let me call our special call meeting for November 9th to order. Our last missed on our call the role for attendance.
Malinowski.
Here.
Here.
McBride.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Terracio. Joe Walker. Baron.
Here.
Overture Walker.
Present.
Mackey.
Here.
English.
Present.
Newton. We have a quorum.
Mr. Chair. I don't know if the clerk heard, but Joe Walker and Allison Terracio are present on the Zoom since it's special called.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item two and three on your agenda. Item two is invocation and item three is pledge allegiance. That's going to be handled by the Honorable Overture Walker. Mr. Walker, you recognize for the invocation, lead us in a pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If everyone would please bow our heads. Lord God, we come before you this evening with thanksgiving in our hearts, thanking you for the use and activity of our limbs, thanking you for rational and sound minds and with so many of us having lost, so many having lost their lives rather during the throes of a pandemic. Thank you for another day in the land of the living. But we also come before you this evening with humility in our hearts, humbled by the fact that it's only by your grace and mercy that we that sit on this council have been able to gain the trust of the voters and the residents of Richland County and to be able to sit at the head of this chamber. We're also humbled by the fact that we have the honor and privilege of governing your people. So in addition to thanksgiving and humility in our hearts, ask that you allow a spirit of collegiality, wisdom and understanding along with open mindedness to permeate this chamber on this evening as we convene to make decisions in the best interest of the citizens and residents of Richland County. It's in your son Jesus' name we pray and give you thanks and all in agreement, please say amen.
Amen.
All right, please stand for the pledge. It's the chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walker. Now bring us to item four on your agenda, which is approval of the amendments. And the first set of amendments are our regular session for October 19th. The chair entertain the motion.
Most to approve.
The most for approval is proper second. Interchanges, deletions, et cetera, for the minutes for October 19th. There being none, I'll ask Ms. Owen to call the role for the motion to adopt the minutes for October 19th.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terracio.
Terracio.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to item four, be on your agenda, which is zoning public hearing minutes for October 26th. Chair entertain the motion.
It's moved.
It's moved in proper second. Any changes, deletions? There being none, Ms. Owen, can you call the role for the motion to adopt the zoning public hearing October 26th meeting minutes?
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terracio.
Terracio.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Baron.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is item five, which is adoption of the agenda. The chair would like to make a few suggestions, reference the adoption of the agenda. One of them is to add under the chair's report, redistricting. I received some information on Friday that I want to at least share with my colleagues so to get moving on that process. So we'll add on the other chairs report, just a brief information reference, redistricting. Also, I'd like to add, you should have on your desk allocations for hospitality tax allocations for District Four. So we'll add that item after the second hospitality tax item, which is under item 20 of items. So we'll add that on the other items. Now, I'm informed that Mr. Cowan will be here, but he's running a little late because he has a commitment. And what I'd like for us to do is move that on the agenda and just allow for the opportunity to present that to him when he arrives. If there are no objections. So those are some changes I'd like to make to the agenda, Mr. Brown, if anything that you.
No changes, Mr. Chair.
And entertain the motion for adoption of the agenda with those amendments.
I'll move to adopt the agenda with amendments.
It's moved as the proper second and further discussion. There being none, Ms. Owen, can you call the role for the motion to adopt the agenda amendment?
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Joe Walker.
Baron.
Baron.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion passes.
This chair, Ms. Owen, can you please make sure to include me?
Got you.
Mackey, yes, thank you.
And that bring us to item six. We say we'll move that item until Mr. Cowan shows up. That's a resolution, reference your service to Richland County. And that brings us to item seven on your agenda, that is, report of attorney for executive session items. Mr. Wright, do we have any executive session items that you were? Thank you very much. There are no special items for tonight that leave us to item eight on your agenda, which is citizen input, our first of the input section for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing.
Mr. Chair. My apologies, a point of executive, I mean, personal privilege, if I may.
Recognize.
Thank you. Wanted to say thank you to the entire Richland County staff. It's a little late, but I did not forget in my heart, the Hopkins Majestic Office really thanks you. The community thanks this entire body for the support of everything that went on during that time. And I just wanted to convey that to Richland County staff and everybody who works so hard and so diligently on that project. And just wanted to say thank you again for all your hard work and that effort. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for sharing that with us. Again, that brings us to the first citizen input item, which is eight A. Mrs.
Chair, no one signed.
The public here is open now closed, no one signed up to speak. That brings us to item nine A, citizen input must pertain to a certain kind of matters, not on the agenda.
Chair, no one signed.
That public here is open now closed. And now brings item 10 on your agenda, which is report of the county administrator, Mr. Brown, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council. Turn your attention to quick pages here, page 26. When I reported out at the time of this last report, that the incident rate for COVID-19 spread in our community had continued to decrease as of the report that I have here before you. That level of incidence had dropped to 167.2 cases per 100,000, meaning that we moved from the higher transmission tier to the moderate tier. That has continued to decline, but again, as of this report, that was accurate information. In a two-week period of taking of this report, the percent positive for this reporting period was 2.9%, which again puts us below the 5%. So again, we've seen some downward trends continue related to COVID-19 spread in our community. At the time of this report, 57.3% of Richland County residents who are eligible to be vaccinated had completed their vaccination and 55.2% of South Carolina residents had completed their vaccination. Under the report on page 26, you will see under the emergency rental assistance statistics, we are in ERA two, part of our program. As of today, we've actually expended over 90% of those funds, but as of this report that I provided here, we were, have put out $7 million roughly assisting 1,246 applicants under ERA two. Again, that does not account for ERA one funding, which we had obligated and helped citizens under that. This is ERA two specific funding. Me and the staff, we requested an additional $22 million of funding from the U.S. Treasury on their funds. We do not know whether or not we will receive that funding, but we have requested it. If we receive that funding, we certainly will let you know. But right now, we are just working with the remaining funds that we have now, which again, in real time, we have obligated over 90% of ERA two funding. But as of this report, I had the $7 million number listed. And so before I move on from those two items, I'll take any questions that the council may have at this time related to items one and two under the coronavirus update. All right, Mr. Chair, under item three, COVID-19 vaccine incentive program. County council approved through the coronavirus ad hoc committee and through county council, the ability for us to incentivize individuals to get vaccinated. The first event was held at the Meeting Place Church. We had 54 Richland County residents that were verified by county staff to come out and participate and receive their first vaccination. That was part of the requirement. It had to be a first-time vaccination and you had to be a Richland County resident. So we had 54 individuals come out and be vaccinated by staff at MUSC. We also had seven individuals get booster shots during that vaccine drive. So in terms of the vaccine incentive program, looks like there was a, you could say that that was a success with the individuals coming out and getting vaccinated. And if it is appropriate, I would recommend that we have a remaining $19,600 that was already approved by this body to be utilized for vaccine incentive programs, that you allow staff to work with council members throughout the geography of Richland County to do additional programs now that you've had this pilot program take place. So that would be a recommendation that I would ask for this council to consider and if appropriate, to address on this evening related to item three. And I'll pause there, Mr. Chair, in case there's any questions or action for that particular item.
Questions, actions. Ms. Baron, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for your report. Also, thank you to our entire staff and team that was out to support the event at the Meeting Place Church. And I do believe it was a success. And as we continue to get shots in arms, I think it's important that we continue doing so by spending the entire, all the funds that were set forth by the council. And so I would like to make a motion to accept the staff's recommendation to continue on with pilot programs throughout the county.
Heard the motions, they're second.
Second.
It's moving properly second, discussion. Ms. McBride, you recognize.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to comment on the vaccination event because when I saw the number 52 or 54, that first time that people getting vaccinated, at first I was a little disappointed. And Mr. Brown, you know how I am about numbers and the outreach and trying to get as many as possible. And then I talked with, I talked with the persons working there and someone told me MUSC staff, and they said, we did an exceptional job with the three and a half hour period. And this was one of the biggest ones that they've had in terms of that period of time and getting people vaccinated. So after hearing that from them, I could think that we would be very proud of the work that has been done. So thank you.
Thank you.
And again, I want to thank the staff because they worked very hard in terms of getting the gift cards out and working and getting this thing done because it's more than just having people come in and get a shot. It's a lot of planning that has to go into it. And so I want to thank the staff for that work also.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'd like to find out from our legal counsel if a motion is proper at this time because this was listed as a report and didn't indicate we needed to take any action, but now we're taking action on a report. So if that's the case, I would think we would have to add that as an item to the agenda and reconsider the agenda.
My response to that is I know we've taken action before as it relates to the report.
Right, I think it's a recommendation from the administrator from his report. So I think it would be okay based on that fact. So I think that that's why the administrator recommended, it's also a recommendation by the administrator from, is based on his report.
Have taken action on it. Other questions? Motion on the floor?
Second.
Other discussion rests with that motion. Learn our.
Malinowski.
No.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terracio. Yes.
No.
Joe Walker.
Joe Walker.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, Mr. Chair, and I'll wrap up with these last three project updates. Strategic planning initiative that the county is going through right now. Do we have a next date planned activity for this Monday, November 15th? So hopefully you all have put that on your calendars. We expect that to be a full day with our consultant as we move forward our strategic planning process. The public safety complex, you can see on their calendar tomorrow, members of your staff have a walkthrough with SLED in order to review some of the possibilities that we can utilize as a part of our construction project. So we'll be participating in that. In terms of our construction manager at risk, just want to know that we had eight submissions for individuals that responded to that RFQ for that project and we look to be awarding that here soon. We will continue to work with DSS. Through that process, we have Grant Thornton reviewing the project to see if it can be qualified for American Rescue Plan funds. Also, we have a huge initiative internally related to our healthcare benefits and we are meeting with members of our staff, whether retired or whether current employees at all levels, trying to get feedback as we look at our health insurance benefit, trying to balance the cost with the value of the services there. I certainly encourage any member of council to participate in any number of those impact meetings that we're having. And then last but not least, we did a refund where the council approved us to look at a project where we could do a refund of bond that we currently had to see if we could realize some savings for the individuals who are paying those funds. And we received a huge benefit larger than we anticipated. And so that's closed out now. And so that's just the report on that. So those really includes all the current project updates. And again, we'll take any questions on any of those items that we discussed and can certainly provide additional information at the next council meeting, which is scheduled for next Tuesday. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Let me, and please accept my apologies for not recognizing our new county attorney, Mr. Patrick Wright. Mr. Wright, welcome to your first meeting as our county attorney.
Thank you, appreciate it.
That brings us to the report of the internal court of council. Ms. Owen, you recognize?
Yes, sir. Since the last council meeting, I've had several recommendations for a retreat location. They are listed in the agenda packet and I just need to know how you would like for me to proceed.
The clerk said, you know, and we'd like to recognize, I don't know if you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't see it listed here, but one of the initial items listed was the township and I would make a motion that we go with whatever dates are available at the township.
Read the motion for the township. Is there second? It's moving properly second and discussion.
Was there another, may I ask, actually clerk?
Yes, you're right.
Was there another place facility that was sent out, that mailed to us?
No, ma'am, no.
There was nothing at USC, was that another meeting?
That's another meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion. If there's another discussion, then Ms. Owen can call the role for the motion for the retreat for the township.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
No.
McBride. Livingston.
No.
Terracio.
Yes. Yes.
Joe Walker.
Joe Walker.
Baron.
Baron.
Overture Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
Oh.
Okay, motion fails.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Owen, for providing the retreat locations. I'd like to make a motion that we move forward looking at options L, A, G, or H, based off the list that you provided.
Option G.
And, or H, based off the original dates that you provided us.
Moving properly second, discussion reference the motion regarding looking into G and H. Clerk, you recognize?
So every time this conversation comes up, I'm a bit befuddled as to how we as Richland County's governing body put forward a plan to take Richland County's tax dollars and go spend them in other counties to discuss the business of Richland County. That's a major challenge for me. So any venue outside of Richland County to me is a non-starter, whether it matters or not. At the end of the day, from a vote perspective, you know, is what it is. But I would actually make a substitute motion to remove options 11A, G and H from the proposed venues for the Richland County retreat.
Circuit, substitute motion is moving properly second, discussion, substitute motion. There being none, Ms. Owen, can you call the role for the substitute motion?
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
No.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
No.
Terracio. Joe Walker.
Joe Walker.
Baron.
Baron.
Overture Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English. Motion fails.
That brings us back to the original motion, which included G and H. Just one question for clarification for me is, I think we need to, if this motion passed, we need to provide some instructions to Ms. Owen in terms of how does she proceed in terms of trying to decide how does that, which one. Was there any more guidance for the maker of the second of the motion in terms of, or would I want to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Make a motion, recognize.
Yes, sir, thank you. As the maker of the motion. As the maker of the motion, uh, as far as guidance or recommendation, I would suggest that you start with locations that we have previously used as your go-by because you have that information already available to you. And then also using the dates that we originally agreed upon as well.
Here, um, I know in the past, um, when we visited, um, other counties, um, in doing so, many of them have done things that we have not done. And particularly in Greenville, we looked at the private venture, public private venture that they had there. And in Charleston, um, right now, we're looking at DSS and they have a new DSS facility. So, um, it's not all about being in the county, but it's about continuing to be innovative and progressive and looking for ways to help better Richland County. So, um, in the past, when we've done that, we've looked at those options. So it's not just there to meet, um, out of town alone. I shouldn't, this would give us sometimes often, uh, fully concentrate on what we're doing. But most of all, I'm supporting it because there are two areas that we've discussed regarding, um, innovation that's done in those counties. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Thank you, and thank you, um, Councilman Wright for pointing that out. And to add to that as well, we are currently in our strategic planning process in both of these areas, our areas of the state that we have talked about, looking at building dimensions, but also economic development and growth that is happening in that area. And so as we look to develop our plan for Richland County and to make our county better, we will rely on expertise and other advantages that are offered in those areas.
I'm glad you recognized.
Hey, Ms. Chair. This council could individually or as a group make a trip to these areas on their own to find out what they may be doing, even if it is something we're looking at in the future. We can certainly do it via the Zoom meetings that are here now. We can do it via email, phone call, or like I said, a personal trip. But the reason I can't support leaving Richland County is the fact that we have all the residents in Richland County. And we're going to make them, if they want to see what this county is planning on doing for the next year, we're going to make them make a trip all the way out of this area when many of them, if not most, work during the day and wouldn't be able to possibly get off the whole day to travel out of town and come back. They may be able to get some time off or come during lunchtime to see what we're having to say. So I think it's a great disservice to the residents of the county to take an annual retreat when you're discussing what you're going to do in the next year out of the county. Thank you.
Here, just, just real quick, and, and you're right, Mr. Malinowski. We, in the last nineteen months, we have gotten real creative with how we engage our community and the citizens of Richland County. And so whereas we are going away to further expand opportunities for Richland County, we can continue to keep them engaged by using the technology that we have put forth as we've been doing for the last nineteen months. So we're not leaving the Richland County residents out for the fact that we are traveling for the betterment of Richland County. And so I, I don't want anyone to walk away and say that, you know, we, we expect you to come to Charleston to attend these meetings or Greenville to attend these meetings. We're not, that is not the expectation. But the expectation is that we will continue to further get them engaged how we have been doing so successfully for the last nineteen months. Thank you.
It's Terracio, you recognize, sorry, did not realize your hand earlier.
Thank you, and I've been listening to everyone, you know, talk about this important event that we do every year. Um, and I am sort of echoing a little bit of what Mr. Malinowski said in terms of, um, I would very much support if we want to go see some facilities in other places. Um, I'm very happy to get a group together and, and go down together. Uh, but for important planning like what we do in our retreat, um, I, I feel that we would be more accessible to the public to have this kind of a meeting in Richland County. So that's just my input on this, um, on this process. Thank you.
I do it, I do it.
Chair, I think there's not one member on this council that does not want the public to be involved. I'm almost, I can bet my life on it. Um, those meetings, we've had meetings in Richland County and there has not been a good turnout of the public. And so we could use the data to support what we're doing in terms of the public participating. And as Ms. Baron said, there would be an opportunity, um, for them to zoom in or to have a meeting recorded. But in the past, um, as we do in a lot of meetings, the public just right now, um, does not, I'm not saying they're not interested, but they have not been participating, the majority. And at our last meeting at the township, I don't think maybe, I don't, not sure if we had one or two people. I don't have the data. So, um, the data does not support what, what's being said. Thank you.
Other questions, I'll ask Ms. Only, recall the, enroll for the motion for, um, item being eleven, which includes G and H.
Malinowski?
No.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Terracio?
No.
No, sorry.
Baron?
Baron?
Could you hear me? Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion passes. And my other item was just to remind you that next week, um, we'll have regular, um, meetings on the sixteenth and then committee meetings. And the zoning public hearing will be that Thursday due to the holidays. And that concludes my report.
You may recall, while that brings us to the report of the chair, you may recall, we add one item redistricting for, um, Richland County, um, council. The chair would, would like to, um, schedule a workshop very, very soon. I have received some preliminary information, I'll be forwarding to council members, some benchmark information, a benchmark report, um, that's prepared, um, by the South Carolina Revenue and Physical Affairs Department. Um, we need to talk about timelines. Um, I've spoken with the, uh, our legal about all the legal matters we need to consider and the timelines and, and as well as meeting with, um, our county administrator. Looking at current, we have the information on current district lines, um, you know, we know what the variance is that we need to look at in different numbers. Um, we've got information about border age, population race, and so forth. Uh, when we, uh, I'll try to make sure, well, first of all, that meeting needs to be very soon. I'll try to make sure it's a time for as many councilmen as possible. I think it's crucial that we show up for that particular meeting for this, well, for this particular work session so everybody can clearly understand what it means with redistricting and what's required for us to do to get this process done in a timely manner for the upcoming elections. Um, so please pay close attention and make sure you be willing to, uh, adjust your schedule wherever possible when we have this particular, um, work session. I think it's that important. And that's all I had to report. That brings us to our, um, open and closed public hearings, um, item thirteen. The C, item on, um, page six on your agenda. Uh, that first, um, public hearing is, is item four, thirteen A. Authorizing issuance of, uh, general obligation bond in one or more series, tax exempt, are taxable in, in an amount not to exceed forty million dollars for the purpose of acquiring construction, e- equipping, rehabilitating, and improving our public safety complex. Um, and authorizing county minutes to, um, prescribe the details of the issuance, um, and sale of the bonds.
Chair, no one signed up?
That public hearing is open, no one signed up, it's now closed. That brings us to item thirteen B. And orders, uh, making certain changes to Article One, Chapter sixteen of the Code of Ordinances, um, of Richland County relating to business license and regulation. That public hearing is now opened, they didn't want to sign up to speak to that public.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, we had two people who signed up. With the first person, Ms. Pam Davis, please come forward to the mic. Um, repeat your name and give your address.
My name is Pam Davis. I live at six thirteen Trader Mill Road. I was a twenty-two-year veteran of Richland County, fifteen years as its Business Service Center Director and the twenty-twenty-one president of the South Carolina Business License Officials Association. I feel compelled as a citizen, as an advocate for your business constituents, and as a subject matter expert to provide my perspective on the business license ordinance amendments. I spent eighteen months before my departure preparing business license ordinance amendments for your consideration. That is not what you are considering tonight. By approving these business license ordinance amendments, you will stop collecting revenue from a business group that counties are authorized by state law to collect from and that you are currently collecting from. You will continue giving one industry special treatment not provided to other business industries in the same circumstances. You will continue giving up tens of thousands of dollars every year by giving contractors a sweetheart rate not given to hundreds of small and minority businesses and industries in the same circumstances. You will continue allowing businesses deny the business license or have their business license revoked to continue operating while they appeal their decision in the courts. The list of serious issues goes on extensively, too long to list in two minutes. I realize state law requires certain ordinance amendments by December thirty-first for compliance on January one. But by adopting this flawed ordinance, you are squandering the opportunity to serve all your residents and business constituents with equal protection and more equitably, cost efficiently.
I shouldn't have to, according to our rules, to wrap that up. But at the same time, um, we, we'll be happy to make sure, um, hopefully you give us your, your complete, um, presentation so that we can.
I'm almost done, may I be allowed to finish?
But what do you mean almost? Because I can't, I, I, I'm responsible for holding up the council rules. Um, so, so, so I'll ask you to just leave that with us.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Here, um, the next person is Michael Deal. Um, Mr. Deal, please come forward. I think that's Deal Appeal, I can't make it out. That is the.
That public hearing is now closed. That brings us to item thirteen C. It orders amend the Richland County Code of Ordinance so as to adopt the Richland County Land Development Code rewrite, um, to replace chapter twenty-six, land development.
Here. We have seven, we have, um, nine persons that signed up. As I call your name, please come forward, you have two minutes to speak. Mr. Jason Enak, please, um, repeat your name and your address.
Evening, Ms. Chair. Fellow council members, my name is Jason Enik. I live at six eighteen Battlewood Drive. Um, real quick, my wife and I are both retired military. We built a house, um, with the purpose of, uh, renting it as a short-term rental to military families moving into and out of this, out of the county. Currently, as I understand it, I'm in a PDD zone, which is, um, against the city ordinance. The new ordinance drafted, I agree with. I was told to come tonight to make sure that the PDD is amended to, under the PD. And maybe Mr. Cook can, uh, speak to that if I'm speaking any correctly. But I just want to make sure that, um, for the purpose of building this house, we're allowed to use it for its intended purpose. Thank you.
Next person is Mr. Chris Lawson. Please come forward, give your, repeat your name, give your address, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Christopher Lawson, twenty-four seventeen, Haywood Rockman Road. Good evening, and thank you for having me. As a local entrepreneur, I know I share concerns with my counterparts. I'll be brief. The second rewrite seems to provide protections and benefits to everyone except small businesses and entrepreneurs. I urge council and staff to consider the second and third order of effects of excluding small businesses and the impact that it could have on our county's future. Rural land is typically the most affordable option for development purposes and not allowing small businesses to operate under rural slash agricultural zoning makes the business barrier to entry extremely high. This will surely discourage current and future desires to operate businesses, stifle creativity, and potentially lose future revi- residents to more small business-friendly communities. I propose that the county creates an addendum to the current rewrite that allows small businesses to operate under rural slash agricultural zoning and/or add more special exceptions slash special requirement options to the principal use table that are traditionally appropriate for rural slash agricultural zoning. There are many examples that come to mind, but the first that can be applied is under the recreation slash entertainment section of the table. Thank you for your time, council, and have a good evening.
Next person is Mr., Ms. Carol Lucas. Please come forward, give your name and address, and you have two minutes to speak, Mr. Carol.
My name is Carol Lucas, two thirty-six, Brookwood Forest Drive, Blackwood, South Carolina, two nine zero one six. Uh, I am a retired, uh, US Army Colonel and I'm a concerned resident of Quicken Tree subdivision. I'm also the HOA president of Quicken Tree, representing over a hundred and forty residents. As a resident and homeowner, I am requesting that a moratorium be placed on development in northeast. As a personal person of humble beginnings, I would like to see everyone attain the American dream of becoming a homeowner. However, we must have infrastructure in place before building more subdivisions. Some of the factors that need to be considered are quality of life for residents, traffic congestion. If you look at the number of houses and homes being built, we're looking at three thousand, multiply that by two vehicles, that's six thousand more vehicles in that area. Uh, unfunded infrastructure requirements, more police, more fire, requirements for new schools, pollution, smog from vehicles, emissions, higher taxes, loss of green space. If we have a natural disaster right now, a tornado or hurricane, we could not evacuate the residents in a safe manner. Note, the majority of developers don't live in northeast and many are from out of state. The bottom line is that money and financial gain should not be the primary factor in making decisions that affect residents' quality of life and well-being. Again, thank you for hearing my concerns. And I would invite each and every one of you to come out in northeast to see for yourself what it looks like out there. Pretty soon, we're going to be a Charlotte or a little Atlanta, uh, at the rate we're going now. Again, thank you for hearing my concerns.
Thank you. Next person is Mr. Ernest Etheridge. Please come forward, provide your, um, full name and address, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
My name is Ernest Etheridge, I'm a retired United Methodist minister. I live at two thirty-nine Brookwood Forest Drive, Blackwood, two nine zero one six. And I ditto what Mr. Lucas has said, and I simply want to add to that, uh, that I pray that each of you will be faithful to your duties and responsibilities to the citizens of, of our great, uh, county and, um, and look at the situation in which we find ourselves in, uh, at this particular time. Um, uh, schools, uh, teachers, uh, roads, streets, um, are just, just overwhelmed in that community. And, um, and to add additional, uh, homes, it just simply clot the whole community up without doing a study as to where we go from here. Hart Scrabble Road is being developed now. And the time that road is, uh, completed and everything, it will probably be obsolete. Thank you so much.
Sir. Next person, Kim Murphy, please come forward, give your full name and address, and you have two minutes to speak.
Good evening, Kim Murphy, Chapin, South Carolina, one five four Old Laurel Lane. Um, I appreciate your hard work on the, the plan. I appreciate your hard work on the plan and staff and yours, but I have two very important suggestions. You are aware that water and sewer are the lifeblood of development. I would suggest that you look carefully at your sewer extension policies before you have the final reading of the text on the plan. Here's why. The proposed agricultural, homestead, residential, and transitional zoning designations allow clustering and bonus density based on extra open space. These rural zoning classifications are obviously in the most rural areas of the districts. Here's a little map, and you will look at your own at some point. Without good sewer policies and extension policies in place, you will potentially be opening up wide these areas for development. And it may be in areas where you don't want that type of development because of sewer lines being run to serve the dense cluster housing, which will inevitably happen with sewer lines. You will not have a say after this plan is approved because this new process cuts the council out of their consideration and out of the picture. I don't think that's what you had in mind with the plan and how you want to have the ability to manage growth. The second thing is homestead zoning is not shown on the map that was part of the review process for the plan. And I strongly urge that you show it prior to the final text approvals, that staff add it so you can see where they envision that homestead zoning classification to be. All other zoning classifications were shown, and this map will be the basis for your final map. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, the next person is John Gregg. Mr. Gregg, please come forward, give your full name, address, and you have two minutes.
Hi, I'm John Grego, and I'll be speaking as chair of the Conservation Commission. I live at eight thirty Old Woodlands Road. I do stutter, so you may find me catching on certain words. Beginning in two thousand and eighteen, the Conservation Commission has prepared detailed comments at all phases of the Land Development Code process, including the code assessment, the Phase One Code, the consolidated draft, and the public hearing draft. Throughout the process, county staff has been willing to meet with us to discuss our concerns in detail. From the beginning, we actively embraced several elements of the code, including the change to density-based zoning, the application of important conservation and sustainability principles across all zoning districts, improvement of existing zoning districts in new districts, including open space in agriculture that address longstanding problems in the code. More recently, we've been pleased to see substantive improvements in the public hearing draft for the code on fundamental issues, particularly the increase in the amount of open space set aside, decreased densities in the agricultural zoning district geared toward more preservation of farmlands, and the new homestead district. We do have some concern that some of our most consistent critiques remain unaddressed. The agriculture district, though much improved, should include incentives to preserve larger tracts of traditional farmland. We are concerned that the limited scope of the conservation districts will not effectively promote conservation goals, including protection of forested land cover and buffers to improve water quality, protection of an agriculture-based economy, preservation of natural resource-based recreation, and conservation of historic landscapes. Thank you.
Yeah, the next person is Taylor Oxendine. Please come forward, give your full name, address, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Hey, Taylor Oxendine with the Central Carolina Realtors, nineteen oh one Main Street. CCRAs opposed to any moratorium proposed by the Richland County Council. Historically, six months of housing supply is associated with moderate price appreciation, and a lower level of month supply tends to push prices up more rapidly. Countywide, there is only a one-month supply of inventory, meaning we are currently in a housing crisis. Again, a healthy market typically has housing inventory supply of about six months. Housing unaffordability has continued to increase, and limiting the amount of housing in Richland County will exacerbate this issue, pricing middle-income families out of the market. In a time when businesses, schools, and hospitals are lacking employees and staff, making it harder for people to find housing in Richland County is a recipe for disaster. While cities in South Carolina are experiencing growth and development, Richland County has stayed relatively flat. This moratorium will result in Richland County being left out while the rest of our state is growing. A county being unable to supply adequate housing for their workforce makes it an inadequate place to expand and grow. It's my understanding that the council has had conversations about replacing this moratorium while reworking the new zoning map, and CCRAs would be in full support of that change. Thank you.
Next person, Kevin Stillman. Please come forward, give your full name and address, and you have two minutes, sir.
Thank you. Kevin Stillman, one twenty Harborside Circle. Mr. Chair, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to be here in front of you again to address this very important issue. We, I'm a developer and a long-term resident of Columbia, northeast Richland County. And as I've expressed to you previously, we, as an industry, have concerns about a general trend that appears to be reductions in density that will come about as a result of this code and the effect that that would have on affordability of housing. And again, we've communicated that to you in the past and to your staff. And we still have those concerns, but I think perhaps a larger concern is the proposed moratorium of rezoning that was in the code. And we would just ask that you would reconsider that. We've used the last couple of weeks to have multiple conversations with staff and some of you and believe that if you're going to proceed with third reading of the text, that in lieu of moratorium, that landowners be allowed to apply for rezoning under the new zoning classification so that they would, you would, in effect, start transitioning to the new code sooner rather than pausing rezoning while you sort through the map. I think it'd be a difficult process to map one hundred and twenty thousand properties. And it's a massive undertaking for you and staff. But I think in the interim, landowners should be allowed to make their application for zoning under the new code as a compromise in lieu of a moratorium. Appreciate your time and be happy to provide additional feedback as you continue to deliberate this.
The last person is Josh Rayburn. Please come forward, give your full name and address, and you have two minutes.
Josh Rayburn with CEC, thirty-seven forty Fernandina Road. Mr. Chair, members of council, thank you for having us today. I want to echo Mr. Stillman's comments with concern over the moratorium and the overall trend going towards lack of density. Nobody in any community is not acknowledging traffic concerns and the like. The fact of the matter is, you know, in addition to development, you know, counties in and of themselves are also competing with other counties to recruit industries for job creation and for economic development and growth. If an industry were to come to Richland County and see a moratorium on rezoning or anything of that nature where they don't have the readily available workforce housing for their staff, then that puts the county at a significant disadvantage, not only for growth in residential, but also economic growth and industry growth. So would encourage you to consider that as well as, you know, if housing affordability expands outside of the county, those workers are still going to be commuting to and from Columbia to work. So not getting the development inside the county does not alleviate the traffic problems. Those will continue on. So anyway, just definitely would express opposition to the moratorium and would appreciate your consideration and definitely thank you for allowing us to speak tonight.
Anyone else signed up?
Thank you. That public hearing.
Mr. Chair. This isn't only, I have some comments here from Dr. Tracy Cooper that she provided to me to read into the record on that item. "I am writing to express my support of the proposed land code rewrite. The Land Development Code is a vital regulatory framework instrumental in helping to guide future residential and commercial projects and expansions. Additionally, the LDC is critical in helping to sustain county and respective community aesthetics while establishing clear procedural guidelines regarding how projects and enhancements are processed and examined. The development of a comprehensive, well-vetted, and carefully crafted land development code ensures neighborhoods and communities in Richland County are well-designed, organized, environmentally sensitive and protective, and equipped with all permanent infrastructure needs. As you explore the next steps pertaining to the Land Development Code rewrite, I humbly ask the following. Decisions made for the Land Development Code rewrite are not determined in silos and without collecting and incorporating feedback from diverse communities and citizens who are critical in helping to provide valuable input and sustain and uphold the existing development moratorium, halting rezoning requests, and/or development projects pending. Completion of the land code rewrite, completion of the existing infrastructure projects such as the Hardscrabble Construction Project, and rejection of development projects calling for clear-cutting of trees in medium to high-density residential developments in already saturated areas, particularly when adequate infrastructure is needed and currently absent. Intentional, responsible, and revisionary forethought and planning will produce an effective land development code. If developed successfully, this document could potentially be a substantial resource and guide for years to come. Thank you for your service and consideration."
Would that conclude?
That brings us to thirteen C. We're still on the public hearing. Thirteen C. An ordinance amended Richland County Code of Ordinance so as to adopt Richland County. That's, I'm sorry.
Thirteen D.
E, I'm sorry. Ordinance amended Richland County Code of Ordinance, chapter two, administration, article ten, purchasing division two, competitive purchasing policy, section two through six twelve. That public hearing is now open?
No one signed up, sir.
That public hearing is now open. That brings us to item thirteen. Public hearing, open authorization, execution, and leave of fee in lieu of everlaring taxes, and a set agreement by and between Richland County, South Carolina, and Avatech LLC to provide for a payment of fee in lieu of taxes. That public hearing is now open. Anyone sign up to speak?
No one signed up, sir.
That public hearing is now closed, and that concludes the items for public hearing of thirteen. That brings us to item fourteen on your agenda, which is approval of consent items. Those consent items are fourteen A through L. To obtain emotional reference consent items.
Mr. Chair. Motion to approve items fourteen A through L.
Thank you. Motion to approve item eighteen A through L. In the proper circumstances, as you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to remove items B and G. Before we move on with this, I see that former Chief Cowan has arrived. If you want to do that now or not.
Got this motion up. And then we'll pick it up. Thank you for bringing it to my attention. So the motion was for the consent items, and what was removed was item B and G. I mean, in further discussion? If not, Mr. Chair, can you carry the motion referencing consent items?
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terratio.
Terratio. Yes.
Joe Walker.
Baron.
Baron.
Yes.
Yes. Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey. Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Before we move to the ones that were pulled, Ms. Malinowski, we're going to take this opportunity to recognize Mr. Cowan. Mr. Cowan. Again, this is support of all our council members. I think there were two primary council members who informed me first. I think that was Mr. Pew and Baron, I think it was.
Yes, sir.
All will have to march down. We love you, Mr. Cowan, but we all, just pretend we're all there standing with you.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Black is going to read the resolution.
Yes, I had the council.
A proclamation recognizing Chief Chris Cowan for his service to Richland County. Whereas Chris Cowan was commissioned as an officer in the United States Navy, he graduated from the University of South Carolina in nineteen ninety-two with a political science degree. He received his master's degree from the Australian Institute of Police Management. He would also graduate from the South Carolina Executive Institute, the FBI National Academy, the FBI Hazardous Device School Executive Management Program, and the FBI Command Leadership Institute. Whereas Chief Cowan would use his education and skills to work internationally to develop policy, policing programs, and initiatives from the London Metropolitan Police, the Stadfordshire England Police, the Queensland Police Service, the Australian Federal, the Hong Kong Police, and the Bulgarian Police Service. Domestically, he would also work in the Los Angeles and New York Police Departments and the North Carolina Justice Academy. Whereas Chief Cowan would spend twenty-nine years with the Richland County Sheriff's Department, many of these years under Sheriff Lot. Sheriff Lot said he watched Chris grow his career for the past twenty-five years. He's excelled in every position he's earned at the Sheriff's Department. I have the utmost confidence that Chris will serve the citizens of Casey with loyalty, professionalism, and integrity, just as he has done for Richland County. Whereas Chief Cowan serves as the state of the president of the South Carolina Law Enforcement Officer Association. He is also the chairperson of the Crime Stoppers of the Midlands, a member of the South Carolina Crime Stopper Council, and president of the Blackwood Rotary Club. His natural abilities as a leader have led to multiple awards, including the South Carolina Attorney's General Law Enforcement Officer of the Year, a two-time recipient of the South Carolina Crime Stoppers Coordinator of the Year, a two-time recipient of the Rotarian of the Year Award, and the American Lawman Magazine Officer of the Quarter. Now there, before it were claimed that Richland County recognizes Chief Chris Cowan for his years of service with Richland County, may he be a shining star to the city of Casey as he was with Richland County.
I would like to take this opportunity. We not only wanted to give you a resolution, sir. Our first eleven months on council, you helped guide us through a lot of things that we needed, and we really appreciate your help. So as a token of our appreciation, we also wanted to present you with this for your job well done for twenty-nine years of service, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So now we know why he's the chief and the chief again, and we appreciate you. Words can't say enough as being a newbie on council. There are many people that welcomed us, and you were one of them, teaching us a lot of things about how we do business here in Richland County. But more importantly, you taught us the importance of excellence and service and commitment, and for that, we thank you.
Chair. Have a point of personal privilege, Mr. Chair. And, oh, well, there it is. Hold on a moment. I wanted to say to you, Chief Cowans, that shortly after I was elected to county council in fall of two thousand and twenty, you know, the first person, you would think the first person I would have interacted with would have been someone on county staff, but it wasn't the county administrator, wasn't the director of economic development. It wasn't an assistant county administrator, but instead it was you. And I think I probably spent more time talking with you than I did Sheriff Lot. And, you know, what I learned in those conversations was, you know, there's more to law enforcement than just, you know, protecting and serving. But you actually have to know how to govern as well. And I would just echo the comments made by my colleagues, you know, Councilman Pew as well as Councilwoman Baron about just learning a lot from you about the way things operate here in Richland County. Those were some very productive and enlightening conversations for me as well. I mean, I learned so much from you. And while I certainly not thrilled about you leaving Richland County, but I'm also excited for you just on a personal level. And I know that the city of Casey, you know, they're already getting one of the best and brightest in law enforcement, but they're. uh, but their city of Casey just got a little safer. So again, thank you for your twenty-nine years of service, and, uh, I intend to remain in contact with you. I hope that cell number has not changed.
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Chair.
Recognize it.
You know, your Lord Richland Mama is proud of you, right? And I echo the, the sentiments of Mr. Walker. Thank you for reaching out. Thank you for making me feel welcome. Thank you for teaching us that law enforcement is more than just protecting and serving, and thank you for all you do. And I am excited because I am the one council member that continues to be able to work with you, so yay. Thank you.
Alan, you know I'm going to miss you. And, um, it's interesting that, um, I almost call you nephew, Mr. Overture. Calling my nephew. It's interesting that, um, Chief Cowan was one of the first persons that I met with too. And, um, he has been, um, an inspiration, and whenever you need something, you can call on him for clarification. And I just appreciate you always being there to support me and to support Richland County and all of its citizens. And if you could talk to any of the constituents, they would tell you the same. So, um, we all love you. We will miss you, but you will still be in our hearts, and we still have your phone number, so we will be calling. Thank you.
Thank you. If Cowan, I just want to say thank you for what you're doing for Richland County. Um, you, you know, when, when individuals, uh, the reason I'm going to miss you because when folks talk about how long folks have been around Richland County, and, and they call my name, I could always say there's Chief Cowan, you know. And Chief, I, I knew you were going to make it, you know, uh, and this is, this is a little bit of history, um, going back when, um, Sheriff Lot, I recall, was running, um, for sheriff. And Chief Cowan, you know, he was, he was working for the current, um, sheriff. So of course during the campaign, you know, he had to support his boss and that kind of thing, you know, um. But all of a sudden, I thought, I thought his career was gone at that particular point, you know? But he was so good, you know, Lot kept him on and, 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 and they became the best of buddies and accomplished the greatest of all things. So that, that says an awful lot about you. So again, thanks so much for your service. Thank you. I appreciate it very much. Thank you. What else? Again, thanks so very much, and we also appreciate it. Um, I'm, I still miss you every Friday calls to remind me what I need to do. Yeah, I've been remiss for the last five weeks. I need to be on that, calling you on Fridays. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You want to, you want to make any comments? I'm not real good in front of a crowd, so.
Oh, come on.
I was waiting for Mr. Malinowski to ask me some questions. Throw me some softballs. Don't open that door. This is your death. I give you a pass. Give me a pass. You know, I, I will say this, coming up through school district two and, and having lived in Richland County for many, many years, it's really an honor and a privilege, um, to have worked with each of you, um, more importantly, to work for Sheriff Lot. You know, he is obviously the number one sheriff in the country and in the state, but by, by far, he was my coach, he was my mentor. Um, but he cares about this county, and he cares about the people of this county. But I will tell you that I know each one of you does as well, and, and that's, that's really what made the hard part about the decision was leaving people like you all that, that care so much about the county. And so I, you know, although I am moving over across the river and, um, I'm still, my phone is still always on, and will always be on to each of you and, and anybody else that I can ever support and help. So I'm, I'm really honored by this and appreciate it very much. I really do. Thank you. Okay, I, I thought, I thought I saw a hand earlier on my monitor. If one of my colleagues or someone had the hand up to speak, it must have, it looked like it disappeared though. Um, does anyone want to be recognized?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Allison.
Recognize, recognize.
Can you hear me? Uh, thank you. Um, I'm, I really am sorry that I couldn't be there tonight, uh, because like a lot of my colleagues said, um, when, when I first got on council, uh, and just didn't know which end was up. You kind of were a grounding force, I'll say, um, and just have always been so accessible and willing to talk things out and willing to explain things and willing to put up with our questions. Um, and so thank you so much, and you are already missed, um, and I, I wish you all the best.
Thank you. Thank y'all. Thank y'all. Right welcome. Thank you. Okay, that bring us back to our consent items. You may recall, um, um, that first item that was removed, um, by Mr. Malinowski, um, was fourteen B and then fourteen G. So we'll take up fourteen B now. Ms. Mallon, as you recognize for item fourteen B.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Uh, due to the fact this is the third reading item, and of course, we, the council, just got some information, uh, this morning that made some changes to this particular ordinance. I'm fine with it, but I don't know that any of our individuals from the business community wouldn't, uh, possibly like to have some input on what those changes were, regardless of how minor. Not to mention the fact that during the citizens' input section, one speaker had mentioned about the potential for favoritism, the county losing dollars because of the way this ordinance is written. I would like to have all those addressed by our business director, and I believe there'd be time to have those addressed and back to us by next week Tuesday. So based on those comments, I would make a motion to defer this until next Tuesday for third reading.
A second.
Take the motion for the referral for item fourteen B, um, until our next meeting. If it's improper second, deferral is not debatable. Our last Ms. Olin Carlow for the motion for the referral for item fourteen B.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terratio. Joe Walker. Barron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to item. Yes.
Uh, I just wanted to make sure that we have, um, before, uh, the speaker leaves, to make sure that we have that information that she presented, so that our staff can correlate that response, because that's, I think, the information that she presented, um, was critical. So if someone from the clerk's office can make sure that we have a copy of that, because she's leaving.
Ms. Chair.
Ms. Newton.
Apologize, Ms. Ms. Newton, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And I also, I wasn't called on the last vote, but I vote yes for deferral also.
Now, I'm not sure about, I couldn't hear you. It weren't loud, very loud to me.
I wasn't, I wasn't called at all, so I, I didn't have an opportunity to speak.
Here, she's here. She's here at the meeting, and she voted yes for the deferral.
Thank you for your good ears.
You're welcome. Those young ears.
Thank you very much. Ms. McBride, you recognize.
Just following up with Ms. Barron, uh, would you please make sure that I have all the information pertaining to this, um, ordinance, this motion?
Yes, ma'am. She's going to email me the information, and then I'll email it out to y'all.
Okay, and I want all of the information, this.
Yes, ma'am.
That brings us to, um, item fourteen G, um, that's economic development, um, funding for paving of, um, Monty Drive from County Transportation Committee. Um, Ms. Mallon, as you recognize.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. In the notes on page one oh six, it indicates that the A and F Committee recommended council approve staff's request to seek CTC funds for the repaving of Monty Drive. While that was the recommendation, it wasn't so cut and dry. The Public Works Director Maloney indicated there are no funds at the current time to do this, and based on that comment, the committee recommended that this road be placed on the list of roads to be paved, and it be put in line with the other roads according to whatever, uh, method they use. So it wasn't just a pavement, it's to put it in on their list, and when its turn comes up, based on the qualifications they use, then it would be considered. So that would be my motion on this one, to, to pass that motion as was, uh, commented on in committee.
What's, it's on page one oh seven, and, and your agenda packet says, is, is that the same item? Yes, it is recommended that council approve staff requests to seek city funds for the paper of motor road, motor drive.
Yes, sir. That came from the Economic Development Director, but it's Public Works Director that knows what funds are and are not available, and it is that individual that needs to, uh, address the repaving. And the committee recommended, and they somewhat agreed with staff, but it wasn't just, like I say, a total cut and dry recommendation. The committee stated that this road be placed on the list of roads to be paved in an order based on the, uh, qualifications they use for paving, and when it came up, if there were funds available, at that point pave it.
I just wonder why that wasn't, that's, I'm just, I'm making it very clear that that's just not, that it's just not what's in the packet here for, before, is that's all.
I know it's not in here. I don't know. Director Maloney's out there. Maybe we could ask him to address it.
He's clarifying for me.
Mr. Chair, uh, we could certainly have him do that, um, but I would just simply say that the item that was presented, as Mr. Malinowski just voiced, was what was discussed. So he, so the questions came out of a response to questions that were received. So that would not have been in the packet, because those questions came out now, maybe in the response and the minutes and all of that, maybe that would have been appropriate, but staff wouldn't have had it in the briefing document, because the briefing document was presented to, uh, to the committee with the recommendation as was. And during the discussion, the questions were asked whether or not there were available CTC funds, uh, and then all of this kind of went from there. So I certainly do understand Mr. Malinowski's point in terms of addressing that, Mr. Chair, but, uh, Mr. Maloney wouldn't have had that in the packet, because that was a discussion, uh, and it may have been a part of the minutes, but that would not have been a new briefing document, would not have been appropriate coming to the council, because it would not be what was considered by the committee. So hopefully that provides some clarity as to why it's not in a packet, but it was a committee discussion rather than items that could have come forth in a new briefing document, which would not be the appropriate process.
That's some clarification on CTC funds. If the CCT approved the funding for a, for a specific project, and the funds are available, and if that project gets put into the sequence of projects and its number, I don't know, whatever, it may not come up to whatever, can the CTC not just simply use those funds for something else? If, if, because they specified a project. So I'm, I'm concerned about what happens to those funds if you don't submit on this project. Would we just use, lose it and go to something else, or what?
So, Mr. Chair, in this particular instance, what you had was Economic Development was requesting for the committee and ultimately the council to allow it to apply for funding, and that's what was before you. In that process, questions came up as to whether or not the CTC had funding, whether or not the county had its own projects that it had already identified for CTC funding, and that led to the discussion. So this project has not been awarded funding. The request was for the ability to request funding for a CTC for this particular project. So maybe that's some of the confusion.
Okay, but they hadn't appropriated the funding for it.
They have not appropriated funding. No, sir.
I'm good. Thank you. Any further question? Mr. McBride, you recognize?
No, I was just supporting, um, the discussion that the committee had, and Mr. Malinowski is correct. That was the decision.
A motion been made, and it's been properly second. Any further discussion?
Ms. Chair, can you repeat the motion? To the make of the motion, repeat the motion.
Yes, the motion was that this road be addressed by Public Works by putting it on their list of roads that are to be paved, and when its turn comes up in the list, if funds are available, to go ahead and pave it.
A discussion. Questions?
Uh, question, a clarification. I just want to make sure that the motion actually is the intent to give them permission to apply for CTC funds?
Yes, that's part of the motion also.
Okay, thank you.
Um, looking color off for item. You recognize.
I, I apologize. Could, Mr. Malinowski? Thank you. Can you hear me? I, I was just wondering if Mr. Malinowski could repeat that motion.
Yeah, let me start it again. The motion is, first off, that staff can, or utility, uh, Public Works can apply for the CTC funds to see if they are available for the paving of this road. If we do not get CTC funds that this road be placed in the order in the ranking that it normally would be placed in, and when it comes up to its turn to be paved, it would be paved.
Thank you.
Other discussion. Recognize.
So I, uh, excuse me if I missed this part. Um, because this is, you know, from, uh, Mr. Rubel and Economic Development, um, is there any kind of a, uh, sense of urgency because this is associated with, uh, an economic development project?
Mr. Rubel, you're.
Sir, I'm here. This, uh.
You have a question?
You have a question? Request. This original request came from the plant manager at Tyson and the plant manager at Owen Steel. Both complained about potholes on the road. Um, they made the request to the administrator and to the chair of county council, um, to, he asked for assistance in getting the road repaved. So that's how this all started, and Economic Development just followed the process in making the request. It is not timely, not, not that I know of.
I, no, I, no, I. Open the motion, open the motion.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terratio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the one, uh, uh, just add, uh, point of personal privilege here on the letter F, which was the Richland County Sheriff's Department Midlands Gang Task Force Grant. I asked several questions of Chief Polis at the last meeting. He did an excellent job of responding to me and providing me all the answers and information that, uh, that we needed to have regarding this particular task force. Thank you, Chief Polis.
That brings us now to item fifteen in, on your agenda, which is third reading items, fifteen A, and Orders amended in the Richland County Code of Orders, Chapter Two Administration, Article Ten Purchasing Division and Competitive. Um, Purchasing Policy, Section Two Dash Six One Two, same purchasing negotiations so as to change the requirements regarding residential solid waste collection vendors. To entertain a motion for that third reading item, which is fifteen A.
Motion to approve.
Which for approval. It's proper second discussion. Ms. Chair. Ms. Chair, our last Ms. Olin Carlow for the motion.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Terratio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
And I'm a yes.
Motion passes.
I bring us to, um, item.
Was out of Zoom mode. I, I'm, I'm just rusty at my Zoom.
Item fifteen, item fifteen B, authorized execution in lieu of a fee in lieu of abhorrent taxes and incentive agreement by and between Richland County, South Carolina, and Avatech LLC to provide for payment of fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. And Chair intends most for item fifteen B. Motion for approval.
Okay.
In proper second, the discussion refers to item fifteen B. There'd be none, I'll ask Ms. Honorable Carle for the motion for item 15B.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to item 16 on your agenda, is report of the Administration of the Finance Committee, and Mr. Malinowski, you recognize?
Yes, Mr. Chair, on this particular item, the committee recommended to deny the contract award to this particular company, and while that's the committee recommendation, we don't have any other information to kind of guide us as to where we go from here if the council does approve the denial, but the committee recommendation is for denial.
The committee recommendation, discussion. I'll ask Ms. Honorable Carle for committee's recommendation for the now.
Malinowski?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
No.
Terracio?
This, I just want to clarify, this is the motion, so voting yes is to deny? It is to confirm the committee?
Correct.
Correct, okay, so yes.
Joe Walker?
Uh...
Baron?
No.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? I abstain. Motion passes.
Bring us to items...
For reconsideration.
Okay.
Point of vote, Mr. Chair, can we get a vote count? Yes. Ms. Honorable, can you give a vote count for that previous motion?
Yes, sir. One, two, three, four is against, and then one, two, six, four, and then one abstention.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Item 17, report of the...
Move for reconsideration.
A proper, yesterday move. Ms. Honorable, can you call for the vote for the motion for reconsideration?
Yes, sir. Malinowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
Livingston?
No.
Terracio?
No.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
No.
Overture Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
Yes.
Joe P...
That brings us now to item 17, as we put, you recognize?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I was not quick enough to ask the question about that item before the vote, so if it is appropriate, could someone address what the appropriate procedure or process will be following the vote that was just taken in terms of getting a vendor for solid waste service?
Mr....
I'm saying no.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I want, I want, not respond that way, but could you just briefly just say that we just said where, where we were originally, we, go ahead.
Yes, sir, that's correct, Mr. Chair, so at this point, with the committee's denial of stat recommendation... What this simply means is that the current provider would remain the current provider at this time, so that is staff's understanding of this process at this point.
Again, that was just a question for clarification. That, that brings item 17, which is report of the Economic Development Committee, and we recognize Honorable, Eva McBride, Chair of that committee.
Mr. Chair, recommendations for the Economic Development Committee, committing to negotiate a fee in lieu of abilorian taxes agreement between Richland County and Carolina Pines Industry 1 LLC identifying the project and other matters. Additional information can be found on pages 221 through 222, and this is an inducement resolution for Carolina Pines Industry LLC that legally recognizes this project so that any investment made can be captured in a fee in lieu agreement, so this is just an inducement resolution.
The committee's recommendation for not further inducement resolution, in a discussion. You recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I know on the next portion of it, which is the same company here, it mentions authorizing certain infrastructure credits, can, do you have that info, Council, McBride, what are the infrastructure items that they're given credit for?
I have some, but I would like Mr. Rubel to give you more detail.
Well, this is just the first reading, right?
Right.
So let me just have that by the time we get to second reading, thank you.
Other discussion? If not, I'll ask Ms. Honorable Carle for the motion for item 17A.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pugh? McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Terracio?
Yes.
Baron?
Baron?
Yes.
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Fair 17.
Fair 17.
The Economic Committee recommends approval on B is authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of abilorian taxes and incentive agreement by and between Richland County, South Carolina, and Carolina Pines Industry, Industry 1 LLC to provide for payments of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. This is first reading, additional information can be found on pages 223 to 256, just for some additional information. Again, this is the first reading for a fee in lieu of tax agreement with Carolina Pines Industry, which is an operating entity from a Charlotte-based development company named Colette, you may recall that from several meetings back. Colette is proposing to construct a 210,000 square foot speculator building at the Carolina Pines Industry Park at Blythe Wood. The 30-year agreement sets the assessment ratio at 6% with a fixed mileage. Additional information can be forthcoming if you need it, Mr. Malinowski.
The committee's recommendation for approval, any questions, discussions? There'd be nine, Ms. Honorable can call for committee's recommendation for item 17B?
Malinowski?
I won't know till I get that additional info.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio? Joe Walker? Baron? Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Fair discussion.
Fair discussion. That brings us to item 18 on your agenda, which is report of the Coronavirus Ad Hoc Committee, that will be presented by the Honorable Gretchen Baron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we do have a recommendation from our committee as it relates to the HVAC and ventilation system before the administration building, and it's a committee's recommendation to approve $5,205 in ARP funding to replace the HVAC and ventilated system as well as the roofing.
What's committee's recommendation?
Who, the committee's recommendation is to approve staff's recommendation to spend $5,205 of the ARP funding to replace the HVAC system and the ventilation system as well as the roofing, and that is for this building, 2020 Hampton, and those items can be found on pages 257 through 265.
The committee's recommendation, discussion, Mr. Malinowski, you recognize?
Hey, Mr. Chair, it says 2020 and 2000, is that correct, it's for both?
That's correct.
Okay, also, I, I'm fully in favor and supporting this, but I just have a couple questions, such as, everything's being replaced, everything, is that correct?
The HVAC, the HVAC system, is that what you're referring to, yes, sir?
Yeah, HVAC, so if everything's being replaced, it seems to me that, I don't understand why it would be sole source and we have to go with the company we have now, versus for $5 million, we don't bid it out, we might get a better system, an equal system at a lesser price. I realize that we're saying it's not coming out of our pockets, ultimately it is, we're all paying taxes to the federal government, but I'm just wondering why we don't look elsewhere and bid this project out, because I don't see how it's being sole source if you're replacing the entire system. There's certainly plenty of other companies that do the same business.
So I think when we say the system, I think we're talking about the units, Mr. Malinowski, I don't think we're talking about like every vent duct within the facility, but what I can do is, and I think we addressed that in the briefing document, in terms of why we were utilizing the same, I guess, system personnel, but I do have Randy Pruitt, Operations Director, who can maybe add a little bit of color to that, that may provide an answer, Mr. Malinowski.
That's right.
Mr. Chair, may I be recognized? I'm Randy Pruitt, Director of Operational Services. We're not doing the complete system, sir, the duct work, all of that's going to remain the same, the VAV systems, the control boards and all of that, and the reason why we want to sole source this is proprietary, they're the one, it's their equipment that we're going to be connecting the new equipment to, and this just saves us dollars.
Okay, I, I still don't fully get it, but go ahead. I just, I just think if you're in the air conditioning business, that it's kind of like, you can change my oil on my car and so can the guy down the street, it's an oil change, so maybe it's different when it comes to HVAC systems.
It does when it comes to the computerized systems.
A computerized system?
Yes, sir, we're going to be going into the same exact computerized systems that we have now.
If this system is so antiquated, then why aren't we replacing the computer system as well?
We, we, it's, we've upgraded it throughout the years, we've just activated your AC in this room by computer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that, that halfway addresses some of my concerns similar to yours, because does this mean that anytime we have air conditioning work done or whatever, we buy equipment, then we're going to have to continue to use that same supplier? It's like we're locking ourselves in forever, and then there won't, there will not be any competition, everything would be sole source.
Ms. McBride, I would say to that question, no, from the standpoint of what we're doing now is we're attempting to address an issue within this facility that has not been addressed, and so we're not completely, as we're trying to say, we're not taking out all the duct work in this facility, so what you're doing right now is you are addressing a capital improvement project related to air quality that's been on your list for a number of years, and now we have a mechanism that we can do that, and we've continued to kind of push that down the road in anticipation of something else that hasn't happened, and so with these COVID funds that are specific to address air quality, we thought it would be appropriate to allow the county to go ahead and move forward with that project, as it has been on your capital improvement list for, I can't, I don't know what the number of years, but at least a good five.
Mr. Administrator, I don't have any problems with the work that's being done, I'm talking about how we're contracting out and doing sole source, I, I fully support the work that's being done or requested to be done, it's just that I don't want to begin to limit ourselves in sole source and eliminate other people having, other companies or entities having the opportunity to bid for the project.
I understand.
And, and long, I sort of look at more than just immediate, I look at long term, and if we continue to be involved in situations like this, we will never, we will continue to have sole source if we have to use the same person to work on the equipment that we buy, so that's my concern.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Mr. Chair, are we paying this Sourcewell Company independently to be the third party in this? And I'll tell you where I'm going with it, if we are dealing with a company that's currently providing us HVAC, and we've got contracts with them, and we're having them do repairs when it's needed, why didn't we just go directly to the company, why do we have a third party in the middle, if in fact we're paying that third party, I'm sure they're not just doing it out of the kindness of their heart?
So in terms of how we're acquiring the service, I'll, I'll let procurement specifically address that, Mr. Malinowski, and then we'll, we'll come back for any additional questions you may have, sir.
Good evening, Jennifer Ladishkin, Procurement Manager, I missed the very first few words you said, but if I'm understanding correctly, you were asking about Sourcewell?
Right, I was wondering if we're paying them and, and why do we need a third party in this if we already have contracts and an ongoing working relationship with a company that's going to be doing the work?
Yeah, Sourcewell is actually a purchasing cooperative, and so it's where a few government entities join together in order to competitively issue solicitations with the intent to have other governmental entities be able to use those, so you can leverage your buying power by consolidating more than one entity together, so Sourcewell is actually a cooperative of various government entities that have gone together and solicited for HVAC services, of which is what we'd like to participate in to get the best price possible from the vendor, so we're not actually paying Sourcewell, we're just utilizing their contract that they solicited for.
Who is paying Sourcewell?
They're...
You're telling me that we can't get the same good deal by dealing directly with the company we've been dealing with for years because they're sole source?
I'll be happy to look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other discussion? I, to call for, for the vote for the committee's recommendation for item 18A.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
Yes. I mean, no.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
It's not that I, I don't agree with it, but I am concerned, and I support what the staff are trying to do, but I am having just issues with overall protocol and procurement, so that is the reason I stated no.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. McBride, I, I understand that, and I wrote myself a note down, a check on revisiting how the county wants to address using cooperative buying, because a lot of our stuff, we're looking at cooperative buying, and in my experience, ideally that's, that allows the governmental entity to work more efficiently in how it spends its time, but I, I certainly hear the questions about equity, but that's cooperative purchasing that we're utilizing, so, but I, I hear the questions, thank you, ma'am.
That motion was carried. Hold it on, correct, I'm, it's, Aaron?
Yes, sir, we have one final item, and that is the committee's recommendation as it relates to utility delinquent receivable, that can be found on page 266 to 268, and it's the committee's recommendation that we, we approve staff up to one, up to $1 million in ARP loss revenue funds to recover utility bad debt brought forth during the pandemic.
Committee's recommendation for item 18B, discussion, Ms. Malinowski? Smell, I should recognize?
Hey, Mr. Chair. On page 268, with that recommendation is, the last paragraph, the last line says, "Staff will communicate the plan to resume disconnections using PIO efforts and a printed message on the October utility bill." Has that been done? Has it been started?
So, Mr. Malinowski, that was a, you're not approving that. So that was a question associated with disconnection. We, that's not what this item is addressing. That information was not approved by the committee for staff to go forward with disconnection services only to address utility bad debt as it relates to the loss in revenue. So that was a part of the discussion, but that's not what the committee did not address, whether or not staff could begin going back into doing disconnects for, for service. So that would be, that would be a separate discussion, sir.
All right, thank you.
Further discussion. Mr. Johnson, can you call the role in committee's recommendation for item 18B?
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Horacio?
Yes.
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, we would like to get reconsideration on these two items, please.
Okay. Motion is for reconsideration on items 18A and B, and proper second. Mr. Johnson, can you call the role for motion for reconsideration on items 18A and B?
Malinowski?
Yes.
Yes.
Pew?
Pew.
No.
Hey, I would draw my vote. We'd start over.
And make a motion. Make a motion with this event, so I'll, I'll accept your most. Proper second separates the items for reconsideration regarding A and B.
All right. Malinowski?
This is for A.
The motion is to separate, we're just separating items.
For A, yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horacio?
Yes.
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
No.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
No.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, Mr. Malinowski, now we're voting on 18A. We just separated items.
Wait a minute. Hold on. I thought we were doing A.
That was A.
That was A.
Okay, that was motion intended, then we'll accept that.
And you got more yeses and nos, therefore, the reconsideration failed.
So that, so that, so that, so that put us back?
Put you back on the table.
Right. To 18A. So, so, so the, so the, we're back to, go ahead, you recognize.
Oh, Mr. Chair, as I understood it, was to divide the question, to separate the two items.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I thought the motion was to divide the question. And that, and that was my understanding too, what intent was to go back to Mr. Malinowski, which was his, and I went back to accept. Pew's motion to divide the question is where I was.
He just didn't state it, Mr. Chair.
The motion was to divide the question. That just puts us back where we were, so we're just simply going to vote on item A and, and item B. And so what's before us is item 18A. For reconsideration, because already voted for the item. I know the board approved. That's what we were splitting the reconsideration. Are we clear? So the motion is for reconsideration for item 18A. I don't know how to explain that any clearer.
Got it. Malinowski?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
No.
Horacio?
No.
Joe Walker?
No.
Baron?
No.
Over to Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Now that bring us to item 18B, and the question before us is reconsideration. So, so those in favor of...
You got you.
Y'all got me. Mr. Johnson, can you call the role for the motion reconsideration for item 18B?
Malinowski?
No.
Pew?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Horacio?
Horacio? No.
No.
Baron?
Baron?
No.
Over to Walker?
I said...
I'm sorry?
Thought I did.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Aaron, that completes your report.
Yes, sir. It completes my report. Thank you so much.
That brings to item 19, the reported transportation ad hoc committee. That's the honorable over to Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Evening, the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee has one item on the agenda, that is item 19A, which can be found on pages 269 through 277 of the agenda, excuse me, and that is the Three Rivers Greenway Phase Two funding. The Transportation Committee recommended approval of this item. Funding for this initiative will come from the $3.3 million that was originally earmarked for bikeways that have since been disapproved by South Carolina Department of Transportation. That funding is unencumbered and available for use. The recommendation is that said funding be utilized to partially subsidize the completion of Phase Two of Section A of the Three Rivers Greenway Project. The Boyd Foundation has committed $3.6 million to completing this project, specifically building a bridge that would connect the zoo side of the Broad River to the city's Columbia Canal. The county has been asked to install a greenway leading up to the bridge, and the anticipated cost of that greenway is $2.2 million. And again, the recommendation from the committee is approval.
Committee's recommendation discussion. There being no discussion. Mr. McBride, you recognize?
I'm going to support this recommendation for the committee, but I do have issues again with, with protocol and the overall process of how we're doing business, business in certain areas, and I greatly respect the foundation for providing this funding, but at the same time, as we use $2.2 million, we're taking away funds from something else, which is a lot of money, but I will support it. I just have those concerns. Thank you.
Smell, you recognize?
Hey, Mr. Chair, I agree with Councilwoman McBride. However, after discussions with Assistant Administrator Dr. Thompson and Utilities Director Maloney, who have given me a little bit of satisfaction in that things will be taken care of properly, I'll also support it.
Can you call the role for the...
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horacio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Pass. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. My ass on that. I think that's Mr. George Bailey sitting over there. George Bailey represents the Boyd family, and I just want to just thank him so very much for his commitment to Richland County. Mr. Bailey, thank you on behalf of the council. And with Mr. Bailey is, is, is Mr. Mike Dawson, who's the director, the head of the Alliance, and Mike, I want to thank you for all your hard work with what you do for the Three Rivers Alliance.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chair. Interrupt the applause. Go ahead, continue on.
Mr. Walker, you recognize?
But I think Mr. Dawson would appreciate what I'm about to do, and that is move for reconsideration.
Motion for reconsideration, proper second. Mr. Johnson, can you call the role for motion for reconsideration?
Malinowski?
No.
Pew?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Horacio? Joe Walker? Baron?
No.
Over to Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton? Motion fails.
And thank you also very much. That bring us to item 20 on your agenda, which is other items. The first other item is an emergency ordinance extending the previous emergency ordinance regarding the wearing of face masks to help alleviate the spread of COVID-19, specifically their recent surge, well, reference the Delta variant. Chairman, the motion reference item...
Mr. Chair, motion to approve.
Okay. It's moving proper second for approval for item 28, and that approval is to... What specific about to, 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 to what? To the orders to extend to...
To extend for 60 days, Mr. Chair.
It's moving proper second discussion. Mr. Malinowski, you recognize?
Hey, Mr. Chair. On the last ordinance we passed, didn't something come about from the state or somewhere that we actually had to retract it at some point in time before it expired? Anybody can answer that if they know the answer?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, not that you're aware? Okay. Well, then my next question is, at what point will it be determined that we'll no longer need to wear our government obedience masks? Answer that one.
Sixty days.
We just keep going on and on forever into the future?
I think...
People start dying from COVID.
Mr. Chair.
If anyone can respond to that, because I don't have an answer yet, but go ahead.
I, I would, you know, not that my answer is gospel, but I think that we, we're following science here, and as we continue to follow science here, we're working to...
Aaron, I don't need to hear that because of science, I think is being conflicted.
You know, it is, it is the truth of the matter, and that we are working to get shots in arms, to get people vaccinated, and until we get to a safe level of herd immunity, then, you know, I support a mass ordinance, and I think it's a great thing now that we've got children that can get vaccines, and we continue to work at it, and that's, that's what we do. We continue to work at it.
Walker, you recognize?
One of the things that we've done as, as a council is, is tried to de-conflict the confusion in the marketplace, so to speak, by aligning ourselves. I, I, I actually think our ordinance was crafted off of, if not completely resembling of, the city ordinance, and it's my understanding that the city allowed their ordinance to expire at their meeting this evening, so I would point back to, you know, politics, perspective, data, science, what you believe, what you don't believe, just from a marketplace confusion perspective. Could someone, one, verify for me that the city did in fact allow their mask ordinance to expire tonight, and then, two, as a body, as we consider the ramifications of conflicting ordinances overlaying similar real estate, what that could look like? So that's, that's really two questions for the administrator. Thanks.
So I have not verified, although, um, news article was brought to my attention that said that the city had allowed their ordinance to expire. But I have not spoken with the city. I could step aside and try to make a phone call to confirm that, and in terms of conflicting information between city and county, certainly you, you will have individuals contacting us, asking us questions simply about who is imposing what, who is required to do what and where, and asking our fire marshal to go out and potentially address mask violations. So certainly there is some, some question there, but Mr. Malinowski also asked a question about, and he kind of looked at me a little bit, and, and I would just say, in terms of when you allow the mask ordinance to expire or extend it, it's certainly a policy question. It's not really the county administrator's question. Most, most of the times when you enacted the ordinance, you asked me for data, I provided it, and then the council took that into consideration with, with whatever other part of information it was utilizing. So if you give me just a minute, I'll step away, I'll try to contact someone at the city to see if I can confirm that, if that's what this body would like for me to do. Certainly have no issue doing that.
Further discussion. Miss, you see, I, Mr. Walker, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I was simply following up and saying that, given that that's really the, um, one of the major factors that has influenced the decisions of this body, particularly with this ordinance, I would think it would be pertinent for us to have that data point before making a final decision tonight.
Mr. Chair, one of my staff members, uh... utilities contacted one of the city personnel, I believe it was Assistant City Manager, who confirmed that, yes, there is still a requirement inside of city buildings, but public building requirement is no longer in effect. If that answers your question.
If that answers your question.
I want to work collaboratively with the city. I'm more concerned in saving lives of our citizens. I'm glad that the city was also looking at that, but it wasn't because the city passed an ordinance that Richland County did, a face mask. We did it because we wanted to help save lives, and could you sort of refresh me on how many people actually contacted COVID and how many were, how many died within the last month, week or month?
Not within the last week. I'd have to go to the DHEZ website in your packet. I provided you a look over a timeframe, but I do not have that information at hand, Ms. McBride.
But we're still seeing people being hospitalized. We're still seeing deaths, is that not correct?
The short answer to your question is yes, ma'am. You are still seeing people hospitalized. It is at a decreased rate, but yes, and you are still seeing deaths. Yes, ma'am.
It's at a decreased rate, and, and that's a good thing, and, and we encourage people to continue to wear their masks and to continue to be vaccinated, so that we could get it down to zero if possible. Thank you.
Question. Being known, I'll ask, Mr. Johnson called the role for the motion.
Malinowski?
No.
Pew?
Pew.
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horacio?
No.
No.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item, there are three items regarding hospital attacks, and that's item B. Yes? Yes. Recognize?
I, I apologize, I didn't want to cut you off. Mr. Chair, I move to approve items 20B through H.
Well, I wanted to... Well, I wanted to, before you do that, I wanted to make sure that... Folks are reminded that we also... We also add an item C, C1, which was, which was District 10 Hospital Attacks.
Okay.
So you, so you're, so your motion is include, again?
Items 20B through 20H.
Okay, which would, item...
That would be through I now, uh, Ms. Newton, because we added District... Ms. Newton, because we added District Four H-tax.
Right, and, and I put that in after the other ones in front, so that would include those, yeah.
Thank you, that, that was the intent of my motion, Mr. Chair, items twenty B through I.
Um, you heard, you heard the motion from item, um, A through, was that A through I?
It was B, because we already took up A.
I'm sorry, B. I'm sorry, B, I'm sorry, B, we already done A, I'm sorry, B, um.
Okay. Okay.
Moving proper second, that, that includes B through, um, I. Um, proper second, Smiley, you recognize.
And one question, Mr. Chair, and I guess staff can answer it on page two eighty-five, and it's even highlighted for, uh, this particular, these particular individuals, Staley Fuller and Player. It says adopted the sixth day of April, twenty twenty-one. Why?
I'm, I'm, I'm showing that that must be a typo, there's no particular reason why the, that date would be April sixth of twenty twenty-one, from what I can see, staff's responding to Mr. Malinowski, so that would be appropriate as of today, if the council so chose.
Just change it to today's date, like the others.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Questions? At, um, this, other of those items.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Livingston?
Horatio?
Horatio? Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English? Motion passes.
Oh, we do need to re, items, I know, um, I like, I intend to motion for the, for the hostile, the three hostile, the, um, tax allocations for reconsideration.
I moved.
It's removed, there's a second.
Second.
It's moving proper second, and that's for the three hospitality, um, tax items, um, in the discussion. Other role for the motion of, for reconsideration for items, um, B and C.
Malinowski?
No.
Pew?
No.
McBride? Livingston?
No.
Horatio? Joe Walker? Baron?
No.
Overture Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
Any of those other items, any other items need to be reconsidered?
Move to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, the meeting is next week, we can wait a week for those items.
The, the motion, the, um, for the motion period, I didn't have anything, was there anything that I missed for, for the motion period?
No, sir.
Um, we had to get to the motion period, Mr. Mc, uh, Mr. Malinowski. Your motion wasn't appropriate, because I hadn't gotten to the motion period yet, before I can get, need to get there before I got to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Now, let's shut the motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, this is
Second.
Moving proper second, uh, Ms. Onkel, can you call the role for motion to adjourn?
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Horatio? Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion passes.